I could go ahead and call to order the reference into Billy Board of Education organizational meeting. And we stand for the pledge, please.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Swab.
Here.
Mrs. Brewer.
Here.
Mr. Bezeker.
Here.
Mr. Manuel.
Here.
Mrs. Hill.
Here.
Next on our items is election of officers for 2025. First is election for president, we have nominations.
I move for Dr. Swab.
Second, then. Any other thoughts?
Oh, you got it.
I already wrote it. I already wrote it.
Mrs. Hill.
Yes.
Dr. Swab.
I'm standing.
Mrs. Brewer.
It's just that.
Mr. Bezeker.
Yes.
Mr. Manuel. Newly elected president gets to read the suit.
Read, we can't read this riff right now. Next, we have nominations for vice president. I nominate Maria, but any other?
One second, then.
A roll call for approval.
Mrs. Hill.
Yes.
Dr. Swab.
Yes.
Mrs. Brewer, same. Mr. Bezeker.
Yes.
Mr. Manuel.
Yes.
Next is setting up our regular meeting cadence for this year. Did you have?
I have some dates, if you are interested in keeping them the same, on the second Wednesday of each month. They'd be February 12th, March 12th, April 9th, May 4th.
They'd be February 12th, March 12th, April 9th, May 14th, June 11th, July 9th, August 13th, September 10th, October 8th, maybe, that's during pumpkin show, if you swing back to that one.
Yeah.
November 12th and December 10th. And then January 7th would potentially be an organization meeting within the first 10 days. If we're staying with the second Tuesday. Is everybody okay with the second Tuesday?
Yeah.
To second.
On Wednesday. That's each Monday. Wednesday.
I was like, did we change it to Tuesday?
Wednesday. Second Wednesday.
The only one definitely for sure is.
Pumpkin show. And that's, we, we went, it was the, it should be scheduled, the second Wednesday of the month is the 8th. This year, we went to Tuesday after that, and that would be the 14th if we still wanted to go that way.
And I'm sorry, I did not bring my calendar, but when did you say the July date was?
July 9th.
Okay.
And then just move the.
Over to the 14th?
Yep.
Would that work with you? You have a meeting on the third Wednesday?
Um, no, my meetings have significantly less this year.
Okay.
So, which is, and I'm not pushing for that Tuesday. I don't remember why we didn't just move it back to the Wednesday after. Is Wednesday better for you guys? As far as, by me. We can do Wednesday because it would mess up our mind.
Right.
We better just do the 15th.
I like Wednesdays. Oh, you mean all of them or just that one?
Just one during. Kick it to next week. To move from pumpkin show, just move it to the third Wednesday instead of the second Wednesday.
Okay. And the rest are still going to be on the Wednesdays? Okay. Yeah, because I think that's good because a lot of sporting events are on Tuesday and Thursday. Wednesday, not much goes on here.
Yeah.
Shouldn't, but, okay. Yeah.
Does that sound great? That's right. I will send invitations to everybody, including a 6 o'clock for the organizational meeting. That might work, right? My apologies.
No, you're fine.
Yeah, I was just.
I just got your Q train.
Yeah, I just, I just looked right before I left the office. I'm like.
Well, I checked the agenda. It said 6:30.
It did, right. And I'm thinking, I'm gonna go home. Then I'm like going back through my emails going, what is it? Yeah, at 6:00.
I checked, it said 6:30, and he texts me and I'm like, oh my gosh, my meetings now, I gotta go.
Sorry, I wasn't near that man.
I made it in like two minutes.
I did come.
Because his truck doesn't have a bumper and be careful where he's riding.
Yeah, we heard about the bump.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so I will send out an invite to everybody, including 6:30 for the second Wednesday of every month except October. That's the third Wednesday, and January is coming down to start at 6 o'clock for the organizational meeting when we tell us in the regular meeting immediately following. Yeah, that sounds great, yeah. Next is approval of the Board of Education service fund for $6,000, which was our normal amount. Motion to approve.
So moved.
I'll let you decide. Any discussions or questions?
Do we usually spend that or we just have it in case we need it?
You're close because if, it depends on how you want to look at it. The OSBA fees are high, so, so that's, that's not an exorbitant amount when you figure everything.
Okay.
Now, I did have flyers for all of you for a conference in Georgia. I didn't pass them out tonight. If you wanted to consider something like that, I.
Like, is it close to the beach or?
It wasn't. Another discussion, roll call for approval.
Mrs. Hill.
Yes.
Dr. Swab.
Yes.
Mrs. Brewer.
Yes.
Mr. Bezeker.
Yes.
Mr. Manuel.
Yes.
Next item is the routine approval of the treasurer for the following duties. I won't read those. They're the same as before. Meeting, my alarm went off on my 6:30 meeting. Motion to approve.
So moved.
And Scott, one second. Any discussions or questions? The same items as, as we do not change them. If there are any questions, roll call for approval, please, Scott.
Mrs. Hill.
Yes.
Dr. Swab.
Yes.
Mrs. Brewer.
Yes.
Mr. Bezeker.
Yes.
Mr. Manuel.
Yes.
Next is same item authority we delegate to the superintendent for this year. And second.
I'll second.
Any discussion or questions? Another roll call for approval, please.
Mrs. Hill.
Yes.
Dr. Swab.
Yes.
Mrs. Brewer.
Yes.
Mr. Bezeker.
Yes.
Mr. Manuel.
Yes.
Next item H is recommend the elementary principal be designated as liaison for the homeless students pursuant to the state and federal laws. Item I is authorizing the board of education members to attend proper seminars and related meetings. And item J is the proper public first resolution that you'll see on our agenda that I won't read to you. A motion to approve.
Summon.
And a second. Any questions over any of those? Bring that roll call for approval.
Mrs. Hill.
Yes.
Dr. Swab.
Yes.
Mrs. Brewer.
Yes.
Mr. Bezeker.
Yes.
Mr. Manuel.
Yes.
Next is the peer center representative. Your cycle's still.
Yeah, it's 12:25.
You got one more here.
Or 20 seconds.
Yes.
So we just, that's Maria. And you'll do the night super. All agree? Motion to approve. So me and Scott. And I'll second. Roll call for approval.
Mrs. Hill.
Yes.
Dr. Swab.
Yes.
Mrs. Brewer.
Do I yes or abstain? Because we both abstain. Well, we have enough. Yes, I say yes, because it's not really in the way.
It does. It does.
And you can vote for yourself.
Okay. I just didn't want to make it so it doesn't work.
Mr. Bezeker.
Yes.
Mr. Manuel.
Yes.
Next is a motion for adjourning of the organizational meeting. Second. And roll call for adjourning.
Mrs. Hill.
Yes.
Dr. Swab.
Yes.
Mrs. Brewer.
Yes.
Mr. Bezeker.
Yes.
Mr. Manuel.
Yes.
Organizational meeting stands adjourned. We will begin, do you want to begin this at 6:30? Give everyone a chance. Looks like we're getting all our students. We can just wait till our regular time, or would you like to?
It was advertised 6:30.
Yeah.
Yeah, so. So, we talked about if there was a lot of time, we were just gonna redo it backwards.
Yeah, we were supposed to be there Monday staff only. We canceled. They have so much more snow there than we do.
Yeah, that's okay.
Yes. My coworker has 30 minutes. I said, I, my yard ain't closed. And I drove yesterday morning at 7:00. I'm a girl, so. So I drove to Lowe's and the roads were perfectly fine the way there. All of, I took 7:30 on there, um, to 36 and then Greenville, everything in just one. And then the way home, I thought, should I take these home or, you know, Jason? And, but the roads were, I couldn't believe I was there. But we didn't get it like they said. Like our parking lot, there's huge amount of snow. We put in the parking lots and it's crazy. They, that's already closed for tomorrow. But today, even trying to, they never, because they don't have a door. They're all, if they're not old, they're all, you know, they get their own transportation, whatever. And they closed today. Yeah, all the Rebel County schools were so closed today. We didn't close today. Were you delayed? Nothing. Yeah, that's.
Our roads were passable yesterday.
Right, just that.
I, I felt a little.
I know, because of the level two. Yeah. I told them I went to Greenville at 7:00 in the morning and everything was great. I thought I'd be like this the whole way because I never left the house today, the floor. And it was, everything was clear. There wasn't none on the road.
You took 36 over.
Yeah. Yeah, all the way to Lowe's and Walmart, everything. The parking lots were empty. It was like a ghost town. No one was out yesterday. No one was at Lowe's, no one was at Lowe's giving paint in the morning but me. I thought, you know, like, this is not the way I'm playing. And Jason's like, oh. Yeah, we had probably 15 schools today. I bet not there. We probably had 15 schools not there today.
That's right.
I had eight kids out of 25, so I was first. And then in the afternoon, I had nine out of 24. That's it. You can't even do anything. You can't even do anything. But some of our big schools closed late, like, they closed so late today. So it would, we, you know, we usually look at those.
Yep. So how did you guys do that?
You just go to school and worry about who comes when they get there. Yeah, Monday was a teacher work day and we didn't have school. And then Tuesday, we canceled, which we don't cancel very often, but most of our South schools were closed. And a lot of them are still closed today.
Yeah, because a lot of, I mean, I was stounded by how much delay they got.
They got way more. Yeah.
I mean, I knew the farther north you went, the less, the less you have. At my house, you know, like a dusting.
Yeah.
It's like nothing.
Yeah, we didn't get much. Inch and a half here. But, so we have some on one hour delays, some on two hour delays and some canceled. So you just take attendance at 8:05 and let them worry about it later.
Yeah.
That's crazy. That's what you want. It's not in your control.
There's some seats over here if you guys want to sit. There's four seats here. Packed house tonight.
Nice.
Dr. Swab, everybody, it's good for space.
Okay.
You gonna start a little early? Cody, we're ready to roll. I'd like to go ahead and call to order the graphics and the Billy Board of Education regular January meet. And if you could stand for the pledge.
Again? It's the third time today.
Pledge allegiance to the.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Swab.
Here.
Mrs. Brewer.
Here.
Mr. Bezeker.
Here.
Mr. Manuel.
Here.
Mrs. Hill.
Here.
I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening. It's nice to see a whole group of students and parents. First on our agenda is any additions or deletions to the printed agenda. If I have a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
So moved.
And Scott.
Second.
Maria. Any discussion or questions? Not a roll call for approval of the agenda.
Dr. Swab.
Yes.
Mrs. Brewer.
Yes.
Mr. Bezeker.
Yes.
Mr. Manuel.
Yes.
Mrs. Hill.
Yes.
Next item is approving December 11th regular minutes and the December 23rd special session minutes. Motion to approve.
Summon.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussions, questions, or additions? Not roll call for the approval of the printed minutes.
Dr. Swab.
Yes.
Mrs. Brewer.
Yes.
Mr. Bezeker.
Yes.
Mr. Manuel.
Yes.
Mrs. Hill.
Yes.
Next, I'd like to turn the meeting over to our administrative team for our student spotlights.
So we'll start off with the elementary part of the student spotlight. And our first student that we're going to spotlight, it's Grace. How are you doing today, Grace? You have the first pick. So Grace was nominated by Mrs. Superin. This is what Mrs. Superin has to say. I would like to nominate Grace Lynn Grimes for this student spotlight. Grace Lynn is a fellowing student with lots of energy and a positive attitude.
Oh.
She's the only one. It always puts forward her best effort. Even when she makes mistakes, she recognizes it, listens to correct the feedback, and tries her best to overcome her mistake and learn from it. Doing all of her hard work, and now in the classroom, she's making some like first growth in her academics. Not only does she have a great work ethic, but she is very kind and caring towards others and a great friend to her classmates. Grace Lynn is such a great role model to the students in her class. She is truly amazing and all around. Her wonderful person. Great job, Grace Lynn. And our next student was nominated by Mrs. T. Schmitz.
This young man, I'm choosing for this month's student spotlight, has been working very hard all year. He's worked hard in all four academic areas to become his very best and make the most growth that he can. I'm especially proud of him and in math, excuse me. He has the accommodation of using a calculator in math class on assignments and most assessments. He rarely uses it in class though, even though it takes him longer. He wants to work those problems out without the calculator. I know that when this guy puts his mind to something, there's very little that will hold him back. I'm very proud and recognized to Haven Asher as a student who knows the characteristics of being worthy of recognition. Keep up the great work to Coven, to Haven, and you will do great things.
And our last elementary student spotlight is Zach Durst. Zach, come on in. How are you, Zach? I said, how are you, Zach? So Zach was nominated by Mrs. Breeze, and this is what Mrs. Breeze had to say. Zach Durst is a student I would like to recognize as this month's student spotlight. Zach is in the fourth grade. He is the son of Carmen Durst and Alex Durst. He has a younger brother, Lincoln. He enjoys baseball playing with his friends. Zach is an amazing young man and is truly impressed me with his work ethic and determination that he has shown over the past few years. He has worked hard to build his reading skills. At the same time, he has improved his self-confidence and his ability to reflect on his learning and find and correct his mistakes. His growth and perseverance in improving his reading led to Zach passing the great AR test this past summer with an accomplished score. I consider myself lucky to work with such a wonderful student. Great job, Zach. Congratulations. And now we'll move on to the junior high high school. And our first student spotlight is Grayson. And Grayson was nominated by Mr. Schultz. This is what Mr. Schultz has to say. I'd like to nominate Grayson. Flippo, right? As this month's student spotlight, Grayson is a shining example of what it needs to be rare. He's the son of John Negan Flippo, and we are so fortunate to have him in our sixth grade class. Grayson consistently demonstrates a strong work ethic, work ethic and eagerness somewhere. He is always active in class discussions, offering insights and asking questions when something is unclear. His curiosity and drive definitely make him a role model for his peers. What stands out most, however, is Grayson's kindness and willingness to help others. Whether classmates, assistants with an assignment or friendly words encouragement, Grayson is there. He truly embodies the spirit of teamwork and cooperation. Grayson's efforts to not go unnoticed. His kindness, dedication, and hard work inspire those who are willing to do their best. We are excited to see the great things that he will help continue accomplishing. Great job, Grayson. Congratulations. And last but not least, we have Kai Robbins. Kai was nominated by Mr. Park. This is what Mr. Park has to say about Kai. I would like to nominate Kai Roberts as this month's student spotlight. Kai has shown so much growth over the past year. His academic performance in my class has been truly refreshing and fantastic to see. He offers to read during class, offers up his answers and thoughts, and is never afraid to ask questions. His performance in classwork and tests show a level of improvement, perseverance that would be a guiding light for students around him. I've had a wonderful time watching Kai of the year. He becomes the student person he is today, and I couldn't be more proud. Great job, Kai. Congratulations.
And I'm going to do something here for the school board, if that's okay. Our spotlight for this month represents or goes back to National School Board Association or School Board Representation Appreciation Week. We have a group here, I don't know, you all know how thankless and how much work these guys actually do, but we have a great team here. So we're proud of them, we're glad they're here, and our staff spotlight this month goes back to our school board. Like to say, they're committed to children, work closely with parents, responsible for ensuring structure that improves a solid foundation from our school system, strong advocates for public education. We now declare appreciation with school board members and proclaim the month of January two thousand twenty-five as School Board of Appreciation Recognition Month. And our job, citizens, to recognize the dedication and hard work of our school board members and in working with them, mold an education system that meets needs of both today's and tomorrow's students. With that, I have a short video that I'm holding. I'm supposed to mute this first. So sorry for those folks at home. You're not going to be here, be able to. And now we're okay? So you good? Okay, great. Well, we'd like to thank all the parents and students for coming. It's the best part of our meeting is to see, to have the opportunity to see the students and give them a chance to be recognized for their hard and really hardworking efforts. So we'll pause the meeting before we move forward, give everybody a chance to like to exit and head home. The opportunity to go home, and then we'll resume our meeting.
He should get a credit since he wasn't here.
Did you really think you were in trouble coming back?
He had no idea. I said, didn't Mr. Bar talk to you? No, no.
Nope.
No. Yeah. I guess we'll find out when you think.
All right. First off, hope you guys had a great holiday and a new year. Don't have a ton to report since the last meeting that we had. We did have a little bit of fun leading up to Christmas break where.
Sorry, I have to make sure everybody can see this from home, too.
Are you serious?
There we go.
But the Santa's helpers, we passed out candy canes to all of the students in the whole building. This is actually the first year that I was able to participate in this.
This is actually Deputy Ubed.
Yeah, Deputy Ubed, Deputy Ubed does this. He kind of puts a giant portfolio together to show the Sheriff's Department all of the things that he does. And he does a lot of great things here in the district with our students. So this is one of the things, and like I said, I've never been able to participate before, even been in meetings or something. This year, they got me to participate. I happened to be the Easter buddy. At least, all of our students thought I was the Easter buddy. And I'm proud of me from my Christmas story.
Oh, that's way too old of a show.
Yeah. It's like one of, yeah, there was only like two or three kids that actually recognized I was not the Easter buddy. But we had a lot of fun with it. The kids loved it. The elementary kids were asking me why the Easter buddy was, you know, thick. And you can go around later this year with the drum. Yeah. Actually, one of them asked me, she asked, didn't I see you in your room? Did I have a drum? So that was a lot of fun. The one thing I do want to kind of talk about is our course of study changes for this upcoming year. We do have to change, and honestly, it probably should have been done last year as well, but we can no longer offer the CCP classes for chemistry, physics, anatomy, and physiology, the cell genetics, evolution, and animal and plant ecology. It's not because we don't want to, it's just our teacher isn't certified yet. She's a younger teacher, she doesn't have the credentials, you know, and the things needed from Edison State to be able to provide that. But we think she will be in the next few years. We needed to update our credits to one point two five for all of our ag classes. They were previously at one credit. Now they're at one point two five credits. In fact, they've always been at one point two five credits. It's just a typo that we caught. So if you see that, you know, our ag classes do get more credit. We are changing the name. Math Modeling Reasoning is a class that we started last school year and Lisa Osborne, which has really helped a lot of our kids so that they don't have to take algebra two. It's very hands-on, it's a great class. And she does a fantastic job with it, but we needed to change that to Advanced Quantitative Reasoning, simply because that's what the state is now calling it. And Wendy and I have kind of a theory, and we hope it's true, but we think they're changing it because it's kind of hard to give a college credit class to something called math modeling and reasoning. But something like quantitative reasoning is something that you could more utilize at the collegiate level. So that's why we think that's going to happen. You know, other than, why would you make a change other than something like that? And we've been around this long enough to know that that's typically what happens. Updated our advanced PE credit to reflect that unfortunately, in the state of Ohio, you're not allowed to get a credit for advanced PE. You have to have half a credit of PE to graduate from high school. And all of our students get that. But what has happened in a lot of other schools, and it probably happened at Bradford at one point in time as well, is kids just keep taking PE classes because why wouldn't they? So, you know, once we get to advanced PE, after your first two PE classes, you can no longer get credit for that. And that's a statewide thing. That's for every school in the known world. We are changing World History to Western Civilization from fifteen hundred. We're doing this, number one, it kind of makes a little more sense. And it is more of a CCP type of title for that class. And then we're going to add at the bottom here, a Western Civilization to fifteen hundred because Mr. Park has a lot of students that would be interested in something like that. And it is also something potentially that we can offer as a college credit plus class as well. And then the other classes that we're adding is History of the Supreme Court and Law, FFA Leadership, Marketing, and Small Business Management. Our new business teacher has a lot of knowledge in the leadership world, in business, and wants to kind of build our business program back up and start offering the classes that, you know, would be more business-like. And he's trying to tailor it around, you know, what his students, like, he's getting to know students this year and tailoring it around, you know, what he feels like they would really like from getting to know them and what would be more beneficial or most beneficial for them when they do go on to college. So those are our course changes that we're going to have. Oh, I also forgot, FFA Leadership, that's a new class that we actually started this year. And it wasn't credit, it was more kind of a study hall where we're putting our FFA leaders in class, our president, vice president, there's five of them. So that they actually have time to sit down and meet and discuss and go over all of the different things that they, that go into their chapter. And we are going to give them a quarter credit for that now, because they are giving up a lot of time. They do a heck of a lot of work, and it's very beneficial. So, you know, we found out we were able to give them a quarter credit for that, so we're going to do that. Any questions on any of our courses, Maria? All right, that's all I have for you this month.
Thanks, Chris.
I know that we, when we were out at the new STEAM room, STEM room that we discussed, the Lego bodies and discussed what they were doing based on what Mr. Owens had given us as a donation. And so this is what their table now looks like, and they've been practicing. So in this video. It's very short, but it leads out, we just need to watch. But they've got their little robot there that they can now manipulate.
Playing on my screen.
But they're having people around their tables they have made now. And so Corey Cannon and Brooke Fair, and then they get on things, like the lady behind the scenes making sure the financial pieces are done, are now part of getting it started. And we've got a lot more kids, as they see it, getting more interested, so we hope to expand that program. And it's sixth grade and fifth grade right now.
I really didn't change until the next one.
It's okay. It was very, it was twenty-four seconds long, it wasn't very long.
All right, I'm going to try something different here. Okay, you want to try it again?
You can try.
Yeah, again, it's playing here. But it's not playing there, so. Okay, I'll go to the next slide.
Pretty cool. This is just a picture of our Christmas parties in the kindergarten classroom. Mrs. Ridout had gotten gingerbread houses from Aldi's, and they put those together. And they do a stocking exchange in the first way, so that's the kids getting that in both of those pictures. And then there were just some other activities going on in the other rooms. And she had a green little costume on, I thought was kind of cute. We also had a elementary student council sharing project. Students collected supplies for families that are staying at Kettering Hospital for long periods of time. Toiletry items and kits were made, and there were eighty kids that were given to families that were there. There are actually people that are living in the garage while their family members are having to be at the hospital. They were actually staying, and I don't know why they were doing that, but there were actually families that were staying in the garage parking complex while they were there. And so eighty kids were given out, as well as they had given out onesies for babies that were down at Kettering Hospital as well. That's one of the times, it's good. Any questions for me?
So we're kind of in the middle of a light time at Bradford. You know, the fall, when you get started, there's so many things going on, and then basketball starts going on, and we have a lot of things going on then. We're kind of in a light time right now, so we don't have a heck of a lot going on. The Dark County Spelling Bee is next Thursday, and we're going to be taking two representatives from Bradford over there. Or, excuse me, four representatives from Bradford over there. Martin Luther King Day is the twentieth, on the twenty-ninth is the Athletic Boosters meeting. We're going to have the National Honor Society induction on the thirty-first of January at two fifteen. And then PTO meets on the third of February. And then the board meeting is, I believe, the twelfth still, isn't it?
Well, sure.
Yep. Go, thirteen.
Yeah, it is the twelfth.
Is it the twelfth? It should be the twelfth, okay.
Yeah, I won't send you the wrong one, I promise.
All right, athletics, Josh couldn't be here tonight, he's at practice right now. So we had a major milestone over Christmas break with Owen Cannon breaking a thousand points, which, you know, you look at the history of Bradford and how long Bradford's been here. There's not many kids that have done that. So that's one heck of an accomplishment by Owen. Says a lot about him, but, you know, he's a great football player, basketball player, even baseball player. But he's an even better kid. I mean, he's just, he is, he is one that we would like to replicate. So congratulations to Owen. You know, he's got, I think I looked at the schedule, I think there are ten games left, so he can definitely add on to that a thousand points and, you know, work his way up the ladder in terms of, you know, where his spot would be in one of the leading point scorers in Bradford's history. Schedule, we have, did you miss one? Is there one after this one?
Yeah, there's one after this.
Okay, schedule for upcoming games that we have, January ninth, High School Girls Basketball is at Preble Shawnee. The junior high basketball is also at Tri-County North on the tenth. High school basketball is against Preble. The eleventh, High School goes to Botkins up in Shelby County there. Then also junior high basketball is at Arcanum on the eleventh. On the thirteenth, girls' basketball plays Lehman Eer. And junior high basketball is at Mississippi Valley. The sixteenth, girls' basketball is at Arcanum, and the seventeenth, high school boys' basketball is at Arcanum. So there's quite a few, quite a few games going on here. There we go. Yeah, they must have got the switch somehow. Did have the Athletic Hall of Fame. Bob's little brother, Chris, was inducted into Bradford Hall of Fame. Played football, power lifted, but really excelled at track and ran at the state meet his senior year. So, you know, very, very accomplished athlete from Bradford. Our one inductee this year to the Bradford Athletic Hall of Fame. So it was kind of cool to watch Bob kind of introduce him and everything, so.
Thanks, Chris. Maria, did you have any updates from CCC?
No, I didn't bring it because I ran out without my phone. But we did have record number of enrollments for next year, and I wish I brought it. I'll show it next month, but it showed like how many schools each one has and like, to their ratio of students, you know. And ours was, of course, large, but I'll bring it next month.
Okay. Sounds good.
I was worried about being late, so I ran right out.
We're trying to get everything, technology's not being my friend tonight, I'm sorry. I have a few things here that I'd like to talk about. First of all, we are supposed to get some cold weather coming up here. I want to reinforce that we do have a protocol. So if it gets cold enough, we will announce to everybody that the kids are supposed to go. The walkers that would like to use this situation or scenario could walk over to the library. We'll have it open, and then the school bus will come and pick them up at seven fifty. So that's a nice warm place for them to walk to, stay in, and not have to walk all the way to school. And those will only be on days that we announce, and those are days when it's really cold out there, where danger is getting close. Head Start restroom. We have a project here that's been going much slower than what we expected, but it's actually moving along fairly well now. The masons are done, there's some pictures here of what's going on. The bottom left is the vestibule as you walk in from the outside there. The double doors are still there to walk into the school board office. But to the left of that now is going to be another door. It's going to be a glass storefront door that parents can go directly into the classroom and pick up their kids or drop off their kids as needed. So the vestibule is going to be a huge addition, but behind that wall is the bathroom. So the vestibule is going to be a huge addition, but behind that wall is the bathroom. And to the right, there's two pictures of inside that bathroom. It's not huge, but it's enough for two toilets and a sink going directly from the classroom. Because right now, those kids in that, that classroom go all the way up to the front of the building, the opposite side there to use the bathrooms and spend a lot of time in transition in the bathroom. So this will hopefully give them a lot more educational time. And utilizing some space that was up porch, it wasn't really utilized at all. And we've got an early childhood education grant that is paying for most of this project, not 100% of the most. This was the first day today that the Head Start classroom moved to the, the elementary end of the junior high wing, but they're down there for the foreseeable future. We'll try to get them back in the classroom as soon as possible, but we obviously gotta get some work done in there without the distractions for him. The hallway has been a project. We have a lot of the painting done on the door fronts and windows, that's already done. They've still got some to do along with the baseboards. They're supposed to be coming in tomorrow and Friday evenings after we let's out of school to finish those pieces up. But the floor itself, there's some imperfections that we're still working on and trying to get some of those things fixed. But outside of that, the actual paint and everything is complete. And we've had very good reviews with it. And this, contrary to, I guess what we were afraid of to start with, was the friction of the surface, how slippery it was going to be when it was wet and those type of things. We did have some, of course, everybody coming in from outside and had water on their shoes. We had one person this morning on crutches that slipped a little bit. But this floor is much less slippery than the wax floor with the tile that we've got throughout the rest of the building, as Carla can attest. So hopefully this is something, it's the first of many renovations we can do with the floors, but we'll continue to search for grants to help offset some of those costs.
I think they look good. I mean, a lot of people said the floors, and I'm like, wow, see, when I see them, I'll let you know what I think. And I, like, pictures don't do it justice, but when I walked in, I thought they looked nice.
It's definitely different than other schools have. It's very busy. We've gotten very good reactions from our kids and most of our adults really like it too. So I, I've been impressed so far, so.
I mean, you really don't know with that little 12 by 12 or 15 by 15 square that we gotta look at. But I guess it's the same, I mean, just when you see it in the big, it's like, wow. I thought it looked nice.
It better be the tile that you had.
Yes.
For sure it is.
Yes. It, it, it's like taking a paint splotch from Lowe's Home and seeing what your walls look like.
And hopefully, less working comp claims, huh?
And then the last part of my report is the school calendar. We met again with the committee today to review options for our calendars and put together anything that could go out to our staff members. We don't have anything tonight to present, but rather we're going to bring it next month after we send it to the staff members to say, which one would you like best? We traditionally have two of them that we will share with the staff members and then they vote on which one they like the best. And then we bring that to the school board to be voted on. The way the contract reads, that's supposed to be adopted at the February meeting. But there's a 30-day wait period before it's officially adopted. So what we're going to do next month is we're going to bring that, say, here it is, please vote on it, contingent on participation and feedback from our, our community. So we did that a couple of years ago, it worked fine. Unfortunately, with snow days and everything else happening here recently, that things weren't quite as quick as we'd hoped and we didn't have that here tonight.
So you're wanting to do another survey or that's just yours?
No, no, we don't, I don't, I don't think at this point we, I personally don't feel we need to at this point. Not for this year, we've talked about some different options. One of our representatives from the committee is here. Wendy, do you want to talk at all about any of them?
Well, I just, this is the, this is the concern we have or what we're looking at. We would like to present two calendars to the staff, one starting the last three days of the fair and one starting after the fair. The problem is, I don't want to present two calendars to the staff. The staff wants something that you guys are gonna vote down or something that's gonna cause us a problem to make us again all go back another month for the calendar committee. Because I don't want to avoid, I'm trying to avoid the contract part of it. But I, I don't know if I need permission or if that's something that we need asked, but that's something we're looking for advice on is, again, we have two calendars. One that starts the last three days of the Dark County Fair, which would be that Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. And then one that starts after the Dark County Fair.
So the one during the Dark County Fair, you would go for, some people would get off to show their animals.
They always do, yes.
And then, I mean, they would be off of school, Monday, Tuesday, kids, right?
Everybody would be off of school Monday, Tuesday.
Right, but then the Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, the kids that are competing or selling or cheering, we just miss school again?
Charing's the week before, that'd be the last three days. It'd be just the selling part primarily on the 20th, 21st and 22nd.
Oh, the second Friday of the fair.
Right, right, not the first Friday, it'd be the last three days of the fair. That Thursday, that Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, the 20th, 21st and 22nd.
So the kids would miss.
Now, kids that are selling, cleaning up all the stuff, they will, they will get their excuses like we've done in the past. And then, like I said, the other calendar starts the 25th, which is the Monday after the fair. Now, next year, I'm waiting, the calendars don't change a whole lot, but the year after, I think, is what we're, the 26th year, wasn't it?
Yes.
The 26th year, we wouldn't start until the 30th because of the fact that the fair runs at, that month runs late.
Yeah, I saw like a lot of parents liked the after Memorial Day or after Labor Day and the Memorial Day thing.
Right, they, I mean, a lot of them voted, that would like, we had comments going, don't change it because of the fair. And some comments that said, we do want to do a pick one does, why aren't we doing that? To me, Chris, the biggest thing that came out of the survey was nobody, everyone's two weeks off the Christmas. That was 60% of the people that participate. Now, we didn't get, I didn't even get half the, half the community to participate, but I think they said today, the message, the dojo messages out in the elementary, 249 people read it. We only had like 91 participants.
They probably.
And that's, and I sent it K through 12, I did not send it. And everyone said, every adult parent. So if they had two emails on their uniforms, each one of them could have voted. So, but the comments, I think, were, I think, to me, though, were split. I have a lot of people that wanted to get out before. I think we figured out around 50, 60% wanted to get out before Memorial Day. But that's, that's harder to do, especially if you have one to two week things. Somebody on there said, why don't we get a spring, full week of spring break? I mean, that, we haven't done that in years. I don't know if I've ever had a full week of spring break here, exactly.
The last year we did it was 2009, which was my last year here in Chicago. 2010 when I could have done it.
Spring break, it was gone. Yeah, it's been a while, it's been a while.
Yeah, we did it when my kids were in school, elementary.
Yeah, right.
Yep, it's kind of nice.
Yeah, but we had orders of comments about that, but I don't want, this is my thing. My fear is if I send out the two calendars we would like to send out and the one ones that goes during the fair, then we bring it to you guys, you guys don't want that or it's gonna be voted down or whatever, that's, that's something we're trying to avoid. But any advice that you guys would wanna give us?
How do those two calendars, how do those two calendars impact the end of the semester and testing?
We kept the semester the same, which will end, both of them will end in December. December 19th will be the last day. We're essentially on one calendar for, starting during the Dark County Fair. I was literally giving those three days before testing and then moving that last day, the kids' last day that we start during the fair is the 22nd of May, which is the Friday before, yeah, the Friday before. More than we could, just making sure that looks right, yeah. And then the teachers will come back after Memorial Day for one day for their workday. The other one, the kids will get out on the 28th. So those three days are just moved, at the beginning, they start three days here. The year, they just, that's the only difference between the two calendars. The middles are pretty much the same.
So both of them, they're able to, the semester's done, they do Christmas break, they come back and start fresh?
But isn't the second quarter still not near as many as the third and fourth quarter days?
Well, third quarter, we usually don't, the third quarter, we usually have more because that's when more your show days are gonna come, is third quarter. Like, we've used two already in third quarter. It looks, there are about 42 days if we do the three, if we do the, I guess that's the right one? Yeah, 42 days if we do it, start after the fair, the second quarter. And it's 42 days if we start before the fair. Yeah, the three days.
So that doesn't matter?
That doesn't matter really. Does give more days than we have currently today. This, this last second quarter was pretty small.
Yeah, that, yeah, our quarter now is really small compared to the other ones.
Well, seven days, yeah. Yeah, because I think normally they're typically 42 days, 45 days. And I think this one was 37 and 51 or 52.
So from 37 to 52.
Yeah, so we added about seven days.
Any thoughts? It's kind of hard to visualize it, just.
I mean, we're talking three days, pretty much that's the difference between the two is three days. But again, we can start those last three days of the fair.
It makes for sure a week for the little kids, to be quite honest with you. So when you look at the fact that you're starting on a Monday, and I'm not even thinking about the fair, I'm thinking about a full week of school for the little ones, the little, little tiny ones. It's a lot for them to go for a full week, whereas a Wednesday, Thursday, Friday is a lot easier gradual move into a school year. So like going during the fair, if I'm just not even thinking about the fair, a Wednesday, Thursday, Friday start for the little kids, kindergarten, first, second grade, helps them transition back into the school year because they're not used to the endurance piece of school, if that makes sense. So as an elementary person, I'm just sitting back thinking, I don't care when you start and I'm not gonna be here anyhow, but in the end, it makes a big difference for little people.
I was gonna say, there's some adults, there's some adults that are saying.
It's just the endurance piece of it, it's a lot to come back into the swing of things. But again, I've never been a fair person, so I don't really have a good viewpoint on those types of things, so.
Discussion thoughts, because the question is, you'd like to send out both to your staff and you want to make sure that whichever one, the staff would be most comfortable with that? Because I think it's a suggestion by the contract, not necessarily a requirement.
Yeah, right, right, and we've typically brought you the one that the staff, and it's the whole staff, it's not just the union staff, it's not just the teaching staff, it's, was it seven or 80 people we have on staff?
Right, right, a little more of eighty, yeah.
Yeah, so it's, it's everybody gets to vote on that. So yeah, that's the, that's the calendar we usually present to you.
Right, you want to make sure that if it is the during fair one, that the board is okay with that.
Right.
So I think that's the question she was asking, if they, if the staff elects, if the staff elects to do the Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, that they don't want us to say, oh.
Well, I just don't think starting, I mean, either we're gonna start for the fair or we're not. Because I think it's not fair to say, you guys can be off to show your animals, but you can't be off to your sales, which are the most important part to those kids. I mean, I just think if we're gonna let them off, we either let them all off or let them off the whole time or not. Because to me, it's defeating the purpose of all the people that want us to start after the fair, so.
I agree, I mean, Scott might not have been on the board when we had that blow up several years ago where we had a lot of patients, parents, we had a lot of parents that were not happy with, because we did transition to the starting earlier with the whole day many years ago was to get more testing days in. So we started earlier so that we could do that. And then that's, we didn't really ask to start earlier, we just started it earlier. And so then we got a lot of pushback from that. And that's the reason, I think, we moved back after the end of the fair because there was a lot of the community members were not, they wanted that family time apparently to be able to end of the summer before they started back to school, to be able to do those activities. So that was the history of it, if I remember right, correct, if I'm wrong. And we didn't really ask permission the first time. We just made a decision based on what superintendent's recommendations that it would gain some extra educational days and we were struggling with test scores, so we supported it.
I think we started like August 15th one year.
It was, yeah.
Like, I think we started during the Miami County Fair.
Yeah, myself, as a, as a parent of a student, was, it wasn't very fun.
And I think we got out like May 17th, 18th, we got it really early, because we got way before graduation even.
Yeah, but it was, it was difficult for this, depending on the weather of the summer, time with your kids and vacations going, trying to get to places, you know, with the kids to vacation to get back before school started was a little, that was, that was a bit much. And I think, and that may have been what created the havoc. But then it landed down to, okay, well, we want you to start after the fair for these various reasons. So that's the conflict, it is, you know, where we set what is important, what do we feel is, are we comfortable with exactly what the staff desires if they desire the three day, are we?
And I'm not saying that they will vote one way or the other. I just don't want to present a calendar that is, is we're gonna be back in the drawing board.
That we can, that we can't support. And so we want to make sure that we're all on the same page. If we ask if we're okay with them weighing in and then they weigh in in one direction, we want to make sure that we can support the direction because it's kind of disenfranchising to ask them to vote and then not really respect it.
So in the past couple of years, we just gave them to choose from both, we just say start after the fair.
We've always done that.
Right, start after the fair.
Right, several years. The difference was the parameters were set, say, okay, uphold the contract number one, but start after the Dark County Fair. That was the only change with that piece. So the calendar committee still have the availability to put things together and put different options to the staff members, but there is a strong push to end right around Memorial Day and try to stay out of June is the big push. So that limited, you know, the, the changes that they could do.
Yeah, so this one's, they're both getting out before then.
Yes, well, yes, yes.
So I can see that benefiting Memorial.
Before June, no.
Before June, yes, not before Memorial.
Yes, before June.
Oh, yeah, but, yeah, the first week of June, right, yeah.
Now, next year, like I said, when that, when that fair time switches or the year after, the 26th, 27th year? When that fair time switches, that, that's gonna push everything back. So I don't know how far we'll, I'll know June will be right around the corner than after Memorial.
What are any thoughts, are we?
So the later start, Wendy, has kids coming back a few days after Memorial Day?
The later start has them coming back the week after Memorial Day, that Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
The end of June, the end of May still, not into June.
And what does the other?
But that would be like exams.
Well, we don't do, we don't do set time exams anymore. You know how, it used to be where the kids would come in for what, it was hour and a half exams?
There were exam schedules where it was basically like blocks, but I kind of did away with that because you had kids coming and going and you didn't know where they were.
Right, so we don't do that to the center.
But yeah, I mean, at the, at the middle school, high school level, yes, we have exams.
And then the one, if we go during those last three days of the fair, that calendar potentially would end where the kids would get out before Memorial Day, but the staff would have to come in the Monday after, because that'd be their workday.
Thoughts, are we comfortable with both alternatives and let them decide or do we have a? She's asking just for some guidance, I guess. We're not approving, it is approving, we're just saying.
I mean, I prefer to start up at the Dark County Fair.
But I don't know how many people want to, want to end before Memorial Day. I also see a big push for that too, let's get vacation started, let's, it's still a little cheaper, so, I don't know.
And I think the, Michelle's point of the warm start, probably in a lot of kids' best interest, the Wednesday, Thursday, Friday is.
Especially the little ones, because they do just. I mean, you just, you can see them, they, they're not crying the first couple of days, but Wednesday, Thursday, Friday come around and they're like, I'm tired. And even if we do the stagger start, which we do, it still is a lot for the little kids. But in the end, like I said, you're representing people that have voted you in. So you, you know, we're a different position than you are. So you've got to represent the community members as well. So I noticed being on city council what that's like, so, you know.
And you know, the big, only problem I have, it's a little difficult to do that at the moment. And it is, was, I mean, as far as deciding, it's kind of a short, almost like a short notice to really get a feel for where the public is at for this. Are we where we were many years ago, or are we at a different point? So that is just the lateness of it, I guess, if I had a, a wish list, would have been wish that we would have did this during the school year, while you were like doing your parent teachers conference and that kind of stuff, thinking, give it a little bit of time to socialize it, to say, okay, we want to start before the, we want to start this kind of thing coming in the year, and then the feel, then we'd have a good feel kind of where we're at.
I think you also would have a different feel if you did a survey April, May. I think your feel would be a lot different as well too, as to, okay, where are my kids doing in school every day, you know, things like that. So I think, I think you're right, I think the closer you're up to something, the, the more hard it is to you.
Right.
Because like Thanksgiving, like I said, Christmas, huge deal, that was a no-brainer.
Right.
But then Thanksgiving, if you take that Wednesday away, I think you'd, you know, there's a lot of people that'd be mad about that too, because it's a travel day.
Right.
So, I mean, I don't know, it's, I think, I get a lot of people come May, parents like, why are they still in school, you know, and.
Right.
I think it just depends. I think one of the reasons we got so much kickback on that fifteenth of August start, I think it was everything, I don't think it was just the fair.
It was horrible.
I mean, I think teachers started back, went on the third or fourth or something, it was, it was crazy.
There was a year of new summer.
Right, right, and I felt that the office of, of Rita, and I think it was Crystal at the time, or even Amy, they, they stayed late, and then they had to come back early. They never made up that time, you know.
And I think that inching toward that creates that same angst that we created by this super early start. Do you think the staff would have an issue if, rather than, than doing the, the fair times this year, that we had that conversation through the year with the parents, and then had an idea, you could present to us so we would kind of have an idea what the community really was seeing, and what they were looking at?
Yeah, because we can start the calendar committee whenever, and we can start it in September.
Because it's just like, you know, I just, you know, when you look at Congress, they put a bill today and ask you to read three hundred pages and vote, and then how do you honestly do that? And that's kind of how my gut feels, it's like, oh, I hear your point, I like starting that Wednesday for the kids. But at the same time, you know, I had, you know, I remember the pushback, and I would feel much more comfortable if it was socialized longer, and we go, yeah, it's good, it just feels kind of rushed to make that kind of a change.
I mean, you could get every elementary parent tell you what their viewpoint is when they come to conferences, because every elementary parent comes to conferences.
We'd have an idea of what our community needs, what our students need, what our parents need, and that's, I don't know.
And we may have two hundred, I don't cares.
But at least you have a representation that way, ninety-one is not very many.
No, if you, if you look at ninety-one, if, if those are two parent households and they just did one for themselves, that's only a hundred and eighty-two people in this district. Well, there's a whole lot more.
They paid attention to the, the time when you needed to do it, it's like pops on your phone, you gotta, I'll do that later.
Well, that surprises me that, with the dojo message you sent with the elementary, two hundred and forty-nine parents read it, that's a lot, but they didn't do anything. But they didn't do anything with it.
It's like me, I read it, and I go, I want to do something about that, and then three weeks later, you go, oh, pass the new date. So what, how do you think that would?
Group that read it and said, I don't really care.
Yeah, and that's what you don't know, is it, I don't cares, I'm okay with it.
Box that says, next year.
I don't care.
Just check off the here.
Either way, that's what you need to do, right?
Yeah.
So, so what do you think that, would that?
I, we could, for sure, do that discussion. Now that, this is the, for next year, I think we could, I don't know if we could do it this year, only because the contract says we have to have something in the board.
Right, so I guess I'm trying, my point would be if.
Because I have no problem starting the committee in September.
Right.
I mean, Joe and I are the only ones on the committee.
So if we left it after the fair this year, and then had that committee start early, socialize it and go, where does, you guys look at the calendar earlier and go, what is going to work, socialize as pre-start or early start or late start, and then we would know kind of what the staff feels, what the community, and what the parents and the students feel, because I know as, as a parent, I felt, you know, I was on the board, but I supported our administration, that fifteenth start date was just, it was not enjoyable.
But then, I, I don't know how, just the other, just the other flip side of that though, like, I think Troy, they do their calendars every two years, I think, I don't know about the Career Center, but some of the other districts just do it, and I don't know if it's part of their contract, I don't know how that works. But they don't get, I don't think, very much, like, when people move to the, to the Memorial Day, Labor Day thing, I don't know how many people in the community actually have to have a vote.
Right.
Here, or even have a say.
Right, and maybe their, their culture is, we do it, don't, no question asked.
And it may be too much, too many, too many inputs.
A culture that asks for input, it'd be hard to disenfranchise them. I don't know, what do you guys think, that's just, I just feel like.
Idea is a good idea, I think it's, it is a short timeframe, and to get inputs of everybody and a better sample to hold off on a big change.
How do you do the committee, like, you have like elementary, high school?
There's two representatives from the elementary, two from the high school, and one.
And, and the, and the contract, it just says that I, because of somebody in the room, but in the contract, that the school counselor had to be in there for testing. And I think it just says, it just says Joe and I, just says the superintendent and, and me are the, are the people that have to be on the committee. But it, the committee could be ten people, and I don't think it's, not, I don't think it says two and two.
Right, so could you do?
Doesn't it?
I, I, I guess past, past practice has been five people, I don't know.
I think you can have as many as you want, but we're trying to make it even, not all ultra personalized.
Our committee could be, what am I going to say, certified staff, you know, just different, yeah.
Well, that's the other question, can they, how much, can we do that with the, because it's in the contract, the calendar committee's in the contract, it's not.
But that.
I'm just saying.
It, yeah, it's, it, the contract is certified staff numbers only, so it's been limited to just certified staff numbers teachers.
But if you want a true committee, you would want maybe some elementary parents, some high school parents, some, you know, just to get people to feel.
Yeah, but if the committee can just figure out a way to get that data for us, you know, your two people could, you know, and then bring it to us and say, hey, you know, look, here's, we, this is how the community and the parents and the students have felt at their evaluation.
I'm biased, like, you vote for this or this.
I just remember, that was my comfort, that August start date, maybe that's what, maybe that's what still sits in the back of my head, but that, I think, started the whole, that's what rolled it.
And like I said, I don't think it was just, I don't think it was just the fair concern is just starting so early.
Right, and then, then it landed on the fair, and then that's what everybody focused on, and maybe we need to take the focus away from that moving forward, and figure out what's best for the kids, but I think if we could leave it as, you know, avoid that fair time in this upcoming calendar, and then for our next year, move forward, and then figure out what we really want, or what everybody wants.
A decision based on what our community needs.
Yeah, I don't know, that's just a thought. Any other thoughts? Scott, any thoughts you have? You lived, you were right, you were teaching probably when that.
Yeah, I've been through all of it. That was one, one year, but before the slow days and stuff, we went, so same week in June.
Yeah, June eleventh, somebody was, we were talking about that today, Saturday.
So you talk about, you talk about, you know.
There's a bad occasion there.
Yeah, but the starters, how about the end as well too? I, 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 what you're saying is fine, but I've not heard a whole lot mentioned about student instruction. And bottom line, that's what, that's what, that's what we got to focus on, because that's what we're here for.
But aren't they getting the same amount on instructional days?
They look pretty similar.
Those contracts should be the same.
Let's say this takes you three days, it'd be any three days beginning of the year, I don't, it don't, it doesn't matter maybe where you started. The three days, you're going, your teachers are just going to spend three days there, or somewhere, wherever they start, wherever we start, I'm still teaching. Wherever they start, those are your first three days, you're going to be getting acquainted, getting used to the routine, handling materials and doing all that stuff. It's going to, it's either going to be, it's going to be whatever three days you decide, whether you go three days before fair, or three days after fair. But those are three days, I can get that out of the road, and I can even get started. And say, okay, you're done out of the road, and now I can start my instruction, or I can start my instruction during those three days. But I'm doing the instruction, and that's what, I, you know, I, it doesn't matter to me where you start. It really doesn't matter, what matters is to me, as an educator, is instruction time. And we moved it there, and yeah, I, I said it before, I'll say it again, we're worried about our instruction time because of the testing. If it wouldn't be for the testing, it wouldn't be that big of a deal. But if we're going to be held accountable by the state in our, our store, in our stores, or whatever, what are you doing now, ABC, or whatever, I forget what it is. If we're going, if we're, if we're going to be held accountable for that, then we need to make sure that we're going to give them the, the optimal time for instruction. When you start, it doesn't mean, I, as a teacher, I, basically, I, basically, I like is being done into the semester.
Yeah, and that meets those.
That's all.
Yeah.
That's, to me, that, that, that's vital.
I agree.
And, well, I, this calendar is strictly for convenience, it's about what makes sense for people's lives.
Yeah.
The testing scores and everything else, I promise, most parents don't care. We, we, if you had input from parents about what the school's test results are, they don't care, they care about the calendar, what makes it convenient. So I agree that that's the reason we're here, is for the education of students, but that's not what the parents are there for.
I agree a hundred percent with you, they don't care.
They're going, you know, the kids are going to get more, as, as much or more education at home, that's built at home. The more days at school we spend, it's useless.
You don't, you don't, the message seems to care if we're in, it's a June.
But it's, but then again, it's a matter of convenience, it's nothing to do with education.
We've got a set number of days, or was it hours?
Again, that's, that's to do with a contract that's written, it's, it has nothing to do with, that has nothing to do with education, that has to do with the contract. Nothing has one to do with the other. So you got to figure out what's more important, convenience, education, contract, what's more important to you? That's my opinion.
Here's what a hat you wear today, right? Paul, any thoughts, I guess, would you?
Not that that helps you.
It does, it, it does.
Does that make sense, I think?
I think there needs to be a lot more discussion around it, because I do agree something, you know, there has to be some middle ground somewhere. Right now, after the fair seems to be the best middle ground.
But it's not a permanent middle ground.
Right, yeah.
But I think, I think the next calendar we go into, that is going to be a totally different discussion because of the fact that the fair's going to be late.
Right, and maybe the discussion is.
I mean, that changes the whole perspective all over again.
Right, and it takes each one on its merits.
Right.
But yeah, they give you, I think, socializing, you can figure it out, I don't think any of us would be opposed to starting during the fair, in the fair, before, depending if that's what's needed for the students, I think we just need more data and information to, and not be so quick at the last minute. Does that help? Important discussion, though.
Yes, very good, thank you, everybody, appreciate it. And that is all I have for my report.
Well, Michelle's clear.
No kidding, right?
Uh, just a couple items, we're still progressing on the audits, we were, I told you last month, we were working three different audits simultaneously. Closing out things, you should have received your W-2 forms tonight, and those are all out to all staff, and finalizing all the reports for the end of the calendar year, and we're going to be bringing some grants to you, not this month, but next month. We talked about doing the, the America Two Fifty Grants, we're now a recognized America Two Fifty community, which I think there are three or four in Miami County, and maybe, and Dark County, there were only two, so we are now in one of those. So we're going to be working on some things, we've got some innovative ideas on the greenhouse, as we're working through that. I think we have some progress made, we'd like to make more, but we do have some time on that particular item, but still want to have that by midsummer pretty well along, so with that, that is my report for tonight.
Any questions for Carla? I didn't have any requests, did you have any requests for public participation or something? Well, we moved into the recommendations for the financial report from the treasurer. So Carla, if you could give us some update on items one through twelve, would you recommend for us to approve?
Okay, naturally, we have the Financial Journal, which I registered, that announced transfers and advances, appropriations, just the gambit. Spirit card donation from Green Book Federal, and donations from the Covington Eagles, that have been very appreciated annually for the last several years. Donation for some of the school lunches, and various items that we've gotten for the, actually, I think that's all in the gymnasium to help increase the sound productivity. And we've gotten the serving lines that will be used in the cafeteria, and the application for the America Two Fifty that I talked about, and then the donation from the, the Wayne Healthcare Foundation to further our AEDs that we need in our current buildings and potential buildings.
Thanks, Carla, I have a motion to approve the items presented, so, thanks Scott, in a second.
Second.
Thanks, Carla, any questions for Carla, or discussion of any specific items? Just one real call for approval.
Doctor Swann?
Yes.
Mrs. Brewer? Mr. Reese Decker?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Mrs. Hill?
Yes.
Next, we have new whole business, or new business to the night, because superintendent recommends approval of the items listed in the consent calendar. Joe, if you could review what items you'd like us to approve?
Since there's only six of them, I'll explain each one of those just real quickly. Unfortunately, we have, unfortunately or fortunately for her, we have the retirement of Mrs. Lady, which I will not try to get real sappy about tonight. Rob Dickerson and Haley Lear and Katie Fry have all taken some classes to be reimbursed, and Rob will have enough to move over in the Masters fifteen. The next one is a new law that is going into effect right now, before November thirtieth, we have to adopt the special ed model policies, our policies already reflect exactly what the state is asking us to do, but we have to have a motion this year by March, next year, and every year after by November thirtieth. So this reflects that, the red stuff, folks out here in the audience and at home don't see this part, that's in red, but the difference is, the original motion was my words, the red stuff was direct from Neola with their policies that came out yesterday. Number five, we have an intervention program that'll help our third grade reading guarantee kids get up to where they need to be. And number six is a transportation agreement between all the school districts that are collaborative to transport kids and use liabilities that you would like to transport all of our kids in the empty classroom to a field trip. This explains how liability works, so something we've already been doing.
Back to doing it again, or doing the transportation with them, or we?
This is exactly what we have been doing, it's just more lies now on paper. So no changes really, it's just written down now.
I think you're referring to the way that the transportation used to work.
We used to do it harder, yeah, they would pay for it.
Okay, yes, you mean getting the kids from here to there, this is only referring to if we take that group of kids somewhere for a field trip.
If we have a grant, and then it's, we're with someone, okay, I understand.
Yes, so, but everything before and after school is still on us to transport our kids, and Sonya and Mrs. Snow.
I have a motion to approve the items presented. We have a motion to approve the items presented.
We'll move.
In a second?
Second.
Thanks, Maria. Any other discussion or questions? If not, we'll call for approval.
Dr. Swab?
Yes.
Mrs. Brewer?
Yes.
Mr. B. Sacker?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Mrs. Hill?
Yes.
Next, item seven and eight?
The next two are construction related, both relative to the Head Start restroom project. The Masons did everything they were supposed to, but they went a little bit above and beyond by filling the cavities in the block with concrete and those type of things and did just a little bit more than what we asked them to do. So they are asking for another $1,500, which is well below many of the other quotes that we've got. So that one's, I'm perfectly fine, but let's just say that. And then number eight is Jonathan Ford Construction has agreed to do a lot of the general work in there. Skip is looking at some of that thinking he's going to knock some of those pieces off the list. But not to exceed the $9,600 is what we're going to have with Jonathan. So as we do go through that and Skip has a chance to put in a window or something like that, we can deduct that from the bill and Jonathan's fine with that.
Do I motion to approve items seven and eight?
I'm there to approve.
Thanks, Maria and Scott. Any discussion or other questions for Joe? We'll call for approval.
Dr. Swab?
Yes.
Mrs. Brewer?
Yes.
Mr. B. Sacker?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Mrs. Hill?
Yes.
Next is considered the second and final reading of the Neola policies that are listed on our agenda on page nine and top of 10. Any questions? I think we'll discuss. Joe, anybody want updates on any other pieces we've talked about before? And if anybody's listening from home, these are on our website too. So if anybody has questions, please call. There's no other discussion? We have a motion to approve the policies?
So move.
Thanks, Trey, in a second.
Second.
Thanks, Pauline. Any discussion for you? None? Roll call for approval, please.
Dr. Swab?
Yes.
Mrs. Brewer?
Yes.
Mr. B. Sacker?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Mrs. Hill?
Yes.
Next is an item to enter executive session for item G1. Thanks, Maria, and second from Scott. Roll call for entering executive session.
Dr. Swab?
Yes.
Mrs. Brewer?
Yes.
Mr. B. Sacker?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Mrs. Hill?
Yes.
Seven thirty-eight. And there'll be no decisions or items moving on after the executive session.
I know, it's inch bad.
The chairman.
But I'm good to leave.
Motion to adjourn.
In a second.
Roll call for adjournment.
Mr. Armstrong.
Yes.
Mr. Brewer.
Yes.
Mr. B. Secker.
Yes.
Mr. Manuel.
Yes.
Mrs. Hale.
Yes.
Page sixteen.
All right, now I'm going to go hold.